Okay, good evening. We'll go ahead and get started with this evening's study session for Tuesday, June 2, 6:03 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll go ahead and get started with the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Dr. Finch was not going to be here this evening, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, and then was it Joe that was going to cover for him? I'm going to see Joe, but we'll go ahead and go to the executive session, assuming that no one else here has any changes to the agenda. Okay, we'll go ahead and go to executive session. We'll come back at five minutes to seven, start the regular meeting. And this for the performance of a public employee and more action will be taken. Okay.
Hi, Robbie. You can go take Stephanie out for dinner.
Well. She heard. Yeah.
It's good. It's um.
Okay, good evening. We'll go ahead and get started with this evening's study session for Tuesday, June 2, 6:03 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll go ahead and get started with the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Dr. Finch was not going to be here this evening, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, and then was it Joe that was going to cover for him? I'm going to see Joe, but we'll go ahead and go to the executive session, assuming that no one else here has any changes to the agenda. Okay, we'll go ahead and go to executive session. We'll come back at five minutes to seven, start the regular meeting. And this for the performance of a public employee and more action will be taken. Okay.
Robbie, hi Robbie, you can go take Stephanie out for dinner.
Well. She heard. Yeah.
I just had two little short things. One was, I know you guys do the pledge of allegiance at your first meeting, but I just feel kind of like dishonoring if we don't do it at the meeting I'm at. You know, at the beginning of this one, every school thing I've ever done or civic things, I always start with the pledge of allegiance. So I have to ask, can we do it at seven? And the other thing is, is that someone made a comment last week that there are pride flags in the classrooms. And is that true? I'd just like, like to know that. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have no issue with us doing the pledge of allegiance right now if it pleases the rest of the board.
I have no objection either. Anyone else? All right, we'll redo it.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, one last check to see if there's anyone online for comments. No comments online? Okay, great. We'll go ahead and move forward. That takes us to the approval, item seven, approval of consent agenda. All right, so we have the approval of the minutes. There's items one, two, three, and four. Does anyone want to break them out? Or can we do them all together? If so, the motion.
Can I ask, and I apologize, I'm going to still vote in favor of the consent agenda, but there were, I think there was an error on the memo with a couple of teachers, and I'll point them out later. I think that they are hired as science teachers at the high school, but they were, on the memo in the packet, it said that they were going to, that they were teaching at Cottonwood. And just looking at their resumes, they look like high school teachers. So I think that's just a, I think that's just a Scribner's error, but because they looked like, well, qualified high school teachers. And actually, as I'm looking at the list here on our agenda, that may be the case, because I don't see any Cottonwood hires for teachers. So just something, I'll, I'll point them out. I can't, for whatever reason, get into my packet here. So anyway, I'll move to approve the consent agenda, though, as presented.
Is it with the expectation that those corrections will be made?
Yes.
Okay, with the expectations of those corrections?
If they need to be made.
And with the exception of item seven B for the June, that was stricken until next week.
Okay, so are you, Mr. Meyer, I understand from what I'm hearing, you're suggesting we take all of those then?
Yes.
Entire consent agenda?
All the way through leave requests.
All right, does anybody else have an issue with that?
If not, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to item number eight, discussion items, director boundaries, public hearing. So, Mr. Connolly, would you like to?
I can, I can definitely, I'll just.
Start us on that?
Yeah, I'm just going to talk about the memo here. Every 10 years after each US census is completed, school districts must review the boundaries of their Board of Director districts and to ensure equitable geographic representation. West Valley School Districts divided into five geographic districts, one for each board seat. Candidates for school board must run for the seat of the director district that they live in. By creating five equal director districts, geographic diversity is ensured on the school board. Each position is elected by overall voters, so each of the five directors represents the entire district in their board actions. These boundaries are completely unrelated to school attendance boundaries. This process will not change any neighborhood's school boundaries. In November of 21, the district contacted Samaish Data Systems to develop a proposal for new director district boundaries based on, based on the latest census data. Since the last realignment of district director districts, there has now been a substantial shift in population growth. Currently, our director districts vary in populations from a low of 6,001 in District Four to a high of 7,716 in District Five. This is a proposal to realign those districts, and it would balance the population so that all five districts would have approximately about 6,485 residents. As you can see in the packet, it shows what the current population is and what our population would be under this new proposal. A public hearing on this, which is occurring tonight, at tonight's board meeting, and then we would adopt this proposal with a resolution at the July 26, 22 board meeting, in accordance with Policy 1105. And I wanted to give you guys some time, so I wanted to put it early on the agenda, so you guys have times to review both the maps, because there's a current map in there, and there is also a proposal map. So each one of those, it provides a whole bunch of data elements in there. So this is just the first reading, then you guys, I want to give you guys some times to review that. Next boarding meeting, if you have any questions or concerns about it, we can, we can address them then. And then at the July 26 meeting, we will have a resolution for you to adopt those if you choose to do so.
All right, anybody up here have any discussion or comments on the proposal? All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to item eight B, budget development.
Yes, I sent you guys an email earlier today in regards to, this was about the $1 million transfer that we do every year into capital projects. I put a little caveat in there, though, because there is, I'll just give you a little bit of background. House Bill 1878 is increasing public school participation in a community eligibility provision. And under that new law, student groups that we can identify each one of our schools, and student groups that have an ISP of greater than 40% will fall under CEP, which means they get free lunch and breakfast, no matter what their family income status is. Under that, majority of our elementary schools, Tannum, Mountain View, Summit View, and White Hollow, and the mid-level campus, all qualified for this. But two of our elementary schools, Apple Valley and Cottonwood, did not. So under that direction, they would continue to fall under the school breakfast and national school lunch program, which has free, reduced, and paid meal statuses. From a communication standpoint, this would be extremely hard to kind of talk to our community about and kind of explain that whole process. So I wanted to see if there was a way for us to possibly relook at the $1 million transfer and take some of that money to cover the lunch and breakfast at all of our elementary schools, which include Apple Valley and Cottonwood as well. So we would take a little bit of that and budget that to pay for lunches for those, those two schools to cover. What would a little bit be? Well, I budgeted about $175,000. I wanted to give myself a little bit of buffer to deal with inflation, rising costs, and those types of things, because you can't, and then enrollment as well, just in case enrollment comes in a little bit higher than what we expected.
And that's included in the?
That is included. So it's both Cottonwood and Apple Valley, and includes both breakfast and lunch for all those students at those schools.
And this would make the entire program for the entire district?
Every elementary school, every elementary school. It would be consistent among every elementary school and our middle-level campus. The only one that the school that would not be included is the high school and the innovation center. They would maintain free, reduced, and paid status, yes.
So I, I'm overall in support of what you're trying to do, Mr. Connolly. What concerns me is a really long deferred maintenance list that you have, yet we're not going to fully fund.
All right, thank you. All right, we have one, Sherry Moore. Or is that, I'm sorry, is that Shane? Sorry.
My name is Shane Moore. I have two elementary students in West Valley Schools, and a third one who will be joining West Valley Elementary Schools in a few years. Will serve as pastor of a church within the West Valley School District boundaries. I am here tonight to thank the school board for their commitment to serving students from diverse backgrounds and settings. This is the first school board meeting I am able to attend, but I watch all of the recordings on YouTube and read all of the school board minutes. I am heartened that West Valley Schools are committed to providing a safe space for all students, regardless of their gender expression, ethnicity, or socioeconomic background. I encourage the board to continue this work, as well as exploring cultural competency for all the staff and students, or staff and faculty, I mean. I know I stand here not just for myself, but for other parents who I am in communication with on a regular basis, and other members of the West Valley School District boundaries that do not have children, but do support this work. And I continue to encourage the board in this important work of making our schools a safe space for all. And I thank the board for the work they've already done.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Much appreciated, and I see there are no Zoom participants that would like, so we'll go to the next person on the list. All right, Carol Blevins?
Hello, I just had two little short things. One was, I know you guys do the pledge of allegiance at your first meeting, but I just feel kind of like dishonoring if we don't do it at the meeting I'm at. You know, at the beginning of this one, every school thing I've ever done or civic things, I always start with the pledge of allegiance, so I'd ask, can we do it at seven? And the other thing is, is that someone made a comment last week that there are pride flags in the classrooms, and is that true? I'd just like to know that, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have no issue with us doing the pledge of allegiance right now if it pleases the rest of the board.
I have no objection either. Anyone else? All right, we'll redo it. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, one last check to see if there's anyone online to comment. No comments online? Okay, great, we'll go ahead and move forward. That takes us to the approval, item seven, approval of consent agenda. All right, so we have the approval of the minutes. There's items one, two, three, and four. Does anyone want to break them out, or can we do them all together? If so, the motion?
Can I ask, and I apologize, I'm gonna still vote in favor of the consent agenda, but there were, I think there was an error on the memo with a couple of teachers, and I'll point them out later. I think that they are hired as science teachers at the high school, but they were on the memo in the packet, it said that they were going to, that they were teaching at Cottonwood, and just looking at their resumes, they look like high school teachers, so I think that's just a, I think that's just a Scribner's error, but because they looked like well-qualified high school teachers. And actually, as I'm looking at the list here on our agenda, that may be the case, because I don't see any Cottonwood hires for teachers. So, just something, I'll point them out, I can't, for whatever reason, get into my packet here, so. Anyway, I'll move to approve the consent agenda, though, as presented.
Is it with the expectation that those corrections will be made?
Yes.
Okay, with the expectations of those corrections?
If they need to be made.
And with the exception of item seven B four, the June, that was
Stricken.
Stricken until next week.
Okay, so are you, Mr. Meyer, I understand from what I'm hearing, you're suggesting we take all of those then?
Yes.
Entire consent agenda?
All the way through leave requests.
All right, does anybody else have an issue with that? If not, we'll go ahead, and since we have a motion, take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to item number eight, discussion items, director boundaries, public hearing. So, Mr. Conley, would you like to?
I can, I can definitely, I'll just Yeah, I'm just gonna talk about the memo here. Every 10 years after each U.S. Census is completed, school districts must review the boundaries of their Board of Director districts and to ensure equitable geographic representation. West Valley School Districts divided into five geographic districts, one for each board seat. Candidates for school board must run for the seat of the director district that they live in. By creating five equal director districts, geographic diversity is ensured on the school board. Each position is elected by overall voters, so each of the five directors represents the entire district in their board actions. These boundaries are completely unrelated to school attendance boundaries. This process will not change any neighborhood school boundaries. In November of '21, the district contacted some AMIS data systems to develop a proposal for new director district boundaries based on the latest census data. Since the last realignment of district director districts, there has now been a substantial shift in population growth. Currently, our director districts vary in populations from a low of 6,001 in District Four to a high of 7,716 in District Five. This is a proposal to realign those districts, and it would balance the population so that all five districts would have approximately about 6,485 residents. As you can see in the packet, it shows what the current population is and what our population would be under this new proposal. A public hearing on this, which is occurring tonight at tonight's board meeting, and then we would adopt this proposal with a resolution at the July 26, '22 board meeting in accordance with policy 1105. And I wanted to give you guys some time, so I wanted to put it early on the agenda, so you guys have times to review both the maps, because there's a current map in there, and there is also a proposal map, so each one of those, it provides a whole bunch of data elements in there. So this is just the first reading, then you guys, I want to give you guys some times to review that. Next boarding meeting, if you have any questions or concerns about it, we can address them then. And then at the July 26 meeting, we will have a resolution for you to adopt those if you choose to do so.
All right, anybody up here have any discussion or comments on the proposal? All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to item 8B, budget development.
Yes, I sent you guys an email earlier today in regards to, this was about the $1 million transfer that we do every year into capital projects. I put a little caveat in there, though, because there is, I'll just give you a little bit of background. House Bill 1878 is increasing public school participation in a community eligibility provision. And under that new law, student groups that we can identify each one of our schools and student groups that have an ISP of greater than 40% will fall under CEP, which means they get free lunch and breakfast, no matter what their family income status is. Under that, majority of our elementary schools, Atannah, Mountain View, Summit View, and White Hollow, and the mid-level campus, all qualified for this. But two of our elementary schools, Apple Valley and Cottonwood, did not. So under that direction, they would continue to fall under the school breakfast and national school lunch program, which has free, reduced, and paid meal statuses. From a communication standpoint, this would be extremely hard to kind of talk to our community about and kind of explain that whole process. So I wanted to see if there was a way for us to possibly relook at the $1 million transfer and take some of that money to cover the lunch and breakfast at all of our elementary schools, which include Apple Valley and Cottonwood as well. So we would take a little bit of that and budget that to pay for lunches for those two schools to cover. Well, I budgeted about $175,000. Wanted to give myself a little bit of buffer to deal with inflation, rising costs, and those types of things, because you can't, and enrollment as well, just in case enrollment comes in a little bit higher than what we expected.
And that's included in the?
That is included. So it's both Cottonwood and Apple Valley, and includes both breakfast and lunch for all those students at those schools. Yeah.
And this would make the entire program for the entire district?
Every elementary school, every elementary school. It would be consistent among every elementary school and our middle-level campus. The only one in the school that would not be included is the high school and the Innovation Center. They would maintain free, reduced, and paid status, yes.
So, I, I'm overall in support of what you're trying to do, Mr. Conley. What concerns me is a really long deferred maintenance list that you have, yet we're not gonna fully fund the commitment that we make every year to do that. Now, I guess my question is, is twofold. One, does that mean that there might be other sources of funding available to the district that could be used to supplement the, you know, to bring up the 175 that we're committing from the general fund to capital projects to make that up? I'm, number one, and number two, and this is gonna sound really critical, and I'm sorry. This just feels like, is, I mean, could we not try to find other pots of money other than this one with which to come up with the 175? So that's two questions.
Well, both of them are valid questions. We're in the midst, and we did budget pretty conservatively when it comes to enrollment. So we can always look at other ways to find some money in order to cover that. This was the first thing that I thought of as far as that goes, because it all comes from the same pot of money.
Right.
It's really hard to use a different, you know, because the way education works is title money, there's federal dollars, there's all kinds of different pots of money that you really can't take from in order to fund lunches. Right, this is. There is, there is probably gonna be grants that come down that will help us with our deferred maintenance as well, but we have a pretty aggressive plan to attack a lot of our deferred maintenance and a lot of things that have been outstanding with the, with the money that we've transferred over the past two years that we have not touched.
And I guess my, my last parting shot is, is as we're gonna hear tonight, costs of projects and maintenance, it's only, I mean, everything's going up. I mean, that's the reality of living in 2022. Giving or providing less money to an area that we know is gonna be more expensive, just, I, I don't know, I, I, it sounds terrible for me to say, because on the one hand, I fully support what it is that you're proposing. I just don't like the money that we're, what we've targeted, the money to fill that gap. That's, I guess, what I would say.
Well, let me, I can, I can make this promise to you.
If I may.
And I'm just one person, I mean, if the rest of the people, I mean, again.
If I may, Mr. Conley, it's
Yes, sir.
I would, you know, support the 170, 75K, whatever, out of the million-dollar transfer if there are not other ways to supplement or augment part of that. To me, you know, one, that's a heck of a lot more important to me than a broken fence or something like that, or an air conditioner even. Well, maybe not today, but on most days. So, whatever we can do, yeah, I realize you're developing the budget at this point. We're gonna allow you or ask you, charge you with the responsibility of coming up with a feasible way of feeding those kids while maintaining as much of our capital project fund as you can.
I can definitely do that, and I take the challenge.
Thank you.
Is there not a way to do both? Fully, fully fund both?
As we're working through the budget currently, no, I didn't feel like I could find a, I can cut in a different area in order to fund that fully, the $175,000 as a whole, which is why I brought this proposal here today, but I can definitely dive a little bit deeper and do a more, I can, I can look deeper and see what I
Sounds like the restrictions on the, the meals is probably larger than the capital projects, so maybe attacking it, maybe attacking it from a different angle?
Correct, I can definitely do that.
Because
I'm also expecting, like I said, I'm also expecting a couple grants to come down. The state has a lot of grants on the horizon as far as attacking some deferred, doing some capital projects and releasing some funds for that stuff. So we're hoping that comes to fruition, and it's something that we can possibly tap into.
Right, and we've committed to those capital projects, but as Mr. Meyer said, kids are our number one priority, and so making sure that they have a full belly is, is more, more important. So, but, but again, we want to be able to get both done.
I think it hurts to take $175,000 out, but I also know that we run a tight ship, and I don't think we've got $175,000 laying somewhere waiting to be used. And I totally understand taking it out of this for now, support of it.
So, my question's probably a little bit, and again, don't misinterpret my question here, my intent, but what would it cost us, and what was the complete rationale why we're excluding the high school? Or I could get more of the high school, but the Innovation Center? And what would the cost be if they, for just doing that? I'm not suggesting we do it, don't get me wrong, I'm just trying to get a value assessment of why we didn't.
We were just aligning the Innovation Center with the high school. That's what we do as far, because they had the majority of nine through 12. I mean, I know they serve seven through eight, but they threw nine through 12, and we have the lunch, you know, the cost set up with the high school, they're associated with the high school. So we felt like we would keep those two together. There's not, I mean, the enrollment there is about 180 students, so we could definitely look at the numbers and, and do it that way. Separate those two since we've always counted those two schools together.
So at this point, you don't really have a good idea what it would
I don't, I can't tell you.
Do it, I'm just, it'd be interesting to know, just, you know, if it's a very minimal amount, I mean, could all of it be done, but fundamentally, it's the money where we're gonna get it from.
Yeah.
To start out with, and I, I understand that's a challenge, I would just like to know.
Well, I think the state's idea was great as far as this, you know, doing this and providing some options and releasing some barriers for our students and our families. The issue lies in that they didn't think out of, they didn't think of it holistically and how it might impact some of those families that are at schools that don't qualify, but they're right on the barrier, right on the cusp, but where they don't qualify for free access, and they don't, and that's, that's the part that I care about, is the 10 to 15% of families that are right on that cusp, and then with the, the way the economy's going, price of gas, everything else, it's just something to consider.
What's the, what's the percentages of each of the levels, elementary, middle, and high school?
I'm sorry.
To be able to qualify for?
Well, it's based upon direct free, so we are really far away for Cottonwood and Apple Valley. Those are at actually at 28 and 22%, we need to be at. The high school's at 30, and the Innovation Center's at 30 as well.
And what's the, what's the threshold?
40.
For those schools as well?
40, for those schools. We can group schools together, but anytime you group those schools within ours, our total percentage drops.
More discussion questions, Mr. Conley? All right, hearing that, we'll go ahead and move on, thank you for that. So, item number nine, public comments of discussion items, public hearing. And just a reminder again, the board does not, will not respond, however, also this part of the public comments is dedication, is dedicated to the discussion items that we just discussed. So, are there any public comments?
Just two quick comments related to the expenditure or the budget transfer for capital projects. I think would be helpful for the board and the community to understand when those dollars might be spent on projects, right? I mean, it absolutely makes sense to continue to put money into the capital projects piggy bank, but if the reality is those projects aren't gonna be spent for two years, then we're not putting those dollars potentially to the best, best use that they could be. Second item, as it relates to the school director boundaries, I think the only map that I'm seeing that it might be helpful to understand is kind of the, where the lines changed. So as I was flipping back with my two computer screens to see what an existing boundary was versus how it might be changed, there wasn't that coalescing document that said, and all these areas that are green changed in some fashion. So, again, just a point of illustration that might be helpful if people review it. I don't think it matters at all by any means. I do also think it's, it's important for the data group to be very clear in their report that the existing director's physical addresses played no part in the evaluation. So, I think it just so happens that nobody moves, but obviously, I think it's important for them to be pretty transparent that they didn't take that into account in any manner. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, for your comments. Anybody via Zoom? No comments there either, and if there are no more comments, we'll move on. Action items, looks like we have a couple. Approval bid for Apple Valley modification. Anyone have questions or would like to make a motion?
Are they still, Mr. Conley, is 70 still thinking that the work will be completed in the summer and in time for school?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Cool. That's great.
Perfect.
Yeah, but that gives us some, a little wiggle room. Good, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, somebody care to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the bid for the Apple Valley field modification.
All right, we'll go ahead and vote now that we have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have approval of child milk, dairy, and fresh produce bid. Any comments or motion?
I'll move to approve the child nutrition milk slash dairy and fresh produce bids as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Thorne, so we have a motion. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on, item number 11, items arising. Anyone?
A question and an item arising. I was at the Innovation Center, and I see that the sign that's the reader board sign by the football field says, "In Center." But actually, on the building itself, it says, "West Valley High School, Freshman Campus." My question is twofold. One, is there a plan to change that? Yes, okay. Okay, cool, all right. Well, that was, I, I was just wondering if we had, I know that there's a little bit of particularity for how we name these school buildings, like how we report that to the state and so forth, and I was just wondering if that was part of the problem, but, okay.
Yeah, it was part of the Innovation Center project.
Great, oh, that they're doing this summer, okay, that makes sense, thank you. I found the two, I found the two employees, by the way, I'll, I'll point those out after the meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else for items arising, number item 11 on the agenda? All right, we'll go ahead and move on. Item 12, reports. Mr. Conley, anything that you might have, or anyone else?
Nothing to add here.
I'm still struggling with the, excuse me, still struggling with disparity between some of you at over 500 kids in their building, and the next largest building being Apple Valley at 420. I, I have asked to get the numbers of how many out of boundary and how many out of district kids are at Summit View, and to look at those numbers and maybe return them to their, either their home schools or their home district to try and relieve some of that pressure in that building. I know that there are, there are students all over the district that are in different buildings from their, from their original boundary, but they're not swelling like some of you is. I've asked that before in a board meeting and have got, not gotten those numbers back. I think we need to look at that sooner rather than later.
I will get those numbers for you.
I'd also like to see the numbers of boundary or out-of-district kindergarteners in each of the buildings. I know that each of the, each of the buildings are fairly, fairly similar in the class sizes, but I wanna, I would like to see the number of out-of-district and out-of-boundary kids in each of those classrooms and kindergarten, in each of the schools.
For incoming kindergarteners, correct, thank you. Yes, sir, definitely can.
Okay, anyone else? I just have one question, and Mr. Conley, maybe you don't know this off the top of your head. I know I'm trying to recall it, but the number of safety report incidents or items listed, do you know if that number is higher than last year or the same number?
I do not.
Okay, I was trying to recall too. On the surface, it looks like it might be less, but I'm not sure. Okay, don't dwell on that. Let's move to, there's nothing else here, nothing from anyone on the travel log report. We'll go ahead and move on to the superintendent's report. Yeah, if you have anything there that you'd like?
Oh, no, nothing to add, and what's already presented.
All right. Board reports, board development, from anyone?
I just, a couple of items. This is not timely to the last meeting, but after graduation, I helped out at the senior party at the YMCA and wanted to say a special thanks to the senior parents that put that on. It was a very, very nice event for those kids, and, and actually, the adults that got to participate as well. It was, it was a lot of fun, so it's, it's great that we have such an active, it's just another example of, of active community members that are supporting our kids in a safe endeavor after graduation. And it was, it was a nice evening, and obviously, there was a lot of other things associated with graduation that were all very nice, West Valley Dollars for Scholar continuing their excellent program in support of, of our seniors. Holy Family Church for allowing us use of their facility for baccalaureate. Just a big thanks to the community for their support in the various graduation activities that took place a few weeks ago, that I know that we all enjoyed the actual ceremony, but then a few other things that I got to enjoy as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, and just kind of tacking on to that a little bit, I'd like to thank the admin team, the school district, the teachers, the staff for an outstanding year. I mean, we had a lot of challenges this past year, just getting back to in-person learning, readjustments, a lot of issues that we had to tackle. And again, I go back to the fact that I think we just have an outstanding staff and faculty and admin team, everyone working together. I mean, sure, there are challenges like there are anyplace else, but we seem to do a great job of just meeting them head-on and dealing with them as they confront us. So, thank you for the hard work, it was a great school year, it makes us look forward to the next one. And again, hopefully, we'll meet it with the same zeal and effort that it takes to meet those challenges head-on. So with that, if there are no other comments, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting today, the 28th, it is 7:30. One of the shorter meetings we've had, gentlemen, thank you.